Good morning.
Welcome to our first FY 2025 budget workshop. Today's workshop is going to be mostly informational. You're welcome to ask all the questions that you need. Our finance team has been working hard, and CIP team and all of our department heads have been working hard to prepare to begin the preparation process for this year's budget. As I said, today's meeting is mostly informational. We are going to start this morning with a presentation from Enterprise Fleet Management. The reason we've invited Enterprise here to do it. Sorry.
And I'm going to interrupt you because this is a meeting. We have to call it to order, do the pledge.
Okay, yes.
There's the notification, then we'll come back to you.
All right, fine, no problem.
So if you will all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This is an informal, there will be no actions taken. We actually do not have a quorum of county council, therefore, because of that, we could not take any action at this point in time. We do have five members. Four of us are at the dais, and council member McKellen is online, others may join. So I would ask for a member who is sitting here or online to make a motion to approve this agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Ms. Tabernak made that motion, Ms. Brown made the second, so that was duly motioned and seconded, and will be adopted without objection, and I see no objections. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning. So as I said, this is the first in our series of budget workshops. Today's meeting will be mostly informational. We have our finance team has prepared a presentation for you to help you understand our financial, our current financial position and how that translates into next year's budget. With us this morning first is a team from Enterprise Fleet Management. We invited Enterprise here this morning because our fleet is one of the, is a large capital, reoccurring capital item, and there's an opportunity for us to find ways to save money, to decrease the age of our fleet, to decrease the number of our fleet vehicles. And these are fleet vehicles, not necessarily specialized vehicles, so there's a difference there. But the county possesses a number of fleet vehicles, and there's a real opportunity for us to realize savings in the age of vehicles, which translates to the cost of maintenance and downtime and all those types of things. So you may find a lot of value from that. We'll move on from their presentation to presentation by our finance team. Mr. Denise Christmas and Valerie Althoff, who is our budget manager for this year, have been working hard to make sure we're prepared for our budget season. They're going to talk about, as I said, our current position, our current revenue, the reassessment, a little bit about our mill value, funds that use some of that mill value, and then our expenses, our routine expenses that we go through, some hard costs, and then a little bit about our CIP budget. Our CIP team has been working with department heads to put together the beginning of that capital improvement program. We're still at the baby steps, the infancy of infancy of that program. We'll talk a little bit about fund balances, our contingency funds, and then Ms. Christmas is going to talk with you for a few minutes about another opportunity, which is a council member discretionary fund. So this is something that some other counties do, and all for your consideration. So, as I said, this is an informational meeting. Please ask questions. I'll be taking notes, so if we don't have an answer right away, we'll make sure we find those answers before we can get back to you.
Very good.
Thanks so much.
And council member Barthol Mule has joined us, so we now do have a quorum of county council.
Okay, so this morning, we have Chris Whiteside, he is the account executive, and Megan O'Hara, and she is our account or the state's account manager. So they're here to present you guys with a good bit of useful information, hopefully.
Perfect. And I do have, I'll, I got enough for everybody?
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I will make sure that you know a copy as well, so that it can be distributed as needed. But, but no, thank y'all for giving me an opportunity to speak. So I'm Chris Whiteside with Enterprise Fleet Management. So we are a division of Enterprise Rent A Car, so we focus on long-term fleet management. So really, everything from the acquisition and funding side of vehicles, we do offer some solutions on the operating side, and they can help out with resale. We partner with over 2,000 government entities across the country, and about 40 in South Carolina. So a few y'all are probably familiar with City of Beaufort, County of Port Royal, Bluffton, Colleton County, Jasper, Florence, Richland County, and then down City of Savannah as well, that's pretty close by. So most of these entities have used Sourcewell to partner with Enterprise, so it's a national purchasing cooperative that Beaufort is a member of, and Enterprise is a preferred provider for. So I put together a kind of brief synopsis, which I handed out, which basically walks through y'all's current fleet, and then it also touches on some of our recommendations. So looking at y'all's current fleet today, and I believe you mentioned, we're looking at just the light duty portion of the fleet, so we're looking at non sheriff vehicles, non ambulances, really more of, you know, oftentimes called the white fleet, or the vehicles that are non emergency related. So there's about 348 of those vehicles in the county that kind of fell into that niche, so it's, consists of, you know, all your general departments, you've got Parks and Rec, Public Works, and then DSN is in there as well.
I'm going to pause for a second. Do you want questions as you are talking, or do you want to present?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, very informal, so y'all ask questions as needed, as they come up.
Okay, so the first question, the 348 vehicles that are light duty, are they a mixture of cars and trucks?
They are, yeah. So it's going to be everything from like sedans, like small sedans, SUVs, pickup trucks. We're looking more at the light duty side, so it's going to be mostly like service bodies and below.
Okay.
Are you including the new, I mean, we bought several electric vehicles too, including those?
Some of those are included as well, if they're assigned to those departments, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we do offer, so our, we put together a couple different models that walk through what a replacement plan would look like and things like that, and we did take into account electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles, so we are able to provide those, you know, we're able to provide them today, and then as we move forward in the future, as technology changes and things like that, we can provide them as well, so.
Okay.
So looking at that portion of your fleet, about 28% of your fleet is over 10 years old, about 63% of the fleet is over six years old, and the average age of the fleet is about eight years. So looking at previous purchase trends, right now, it would take y'all around 11 and a half years to cycle through the fleet. You know, some of the things you experience with an aged fleet are higher maintenance cost, higher fuel cost, increased downtime, and then obviously the safety aspect becomes a factor as you start to look at aged vehicles. So our goal was to really put together an effective life cycle that's going to maximize the equity at the end. So we put together a plan that shows reducing your age from about 11 years down to about five years. And then our recommendation in that first year, there's about 123 vehicles that we would recommend pulling out of fleet and either replacing or pulling out of fleet in general. Those 123 vehicles would bring about $700,000 in proceeds from sale, if we were to sell those vehicles on your behalf. We would expect maintenance costs to go down somewhere between 60 and 70%, if you were to move towards a five-year rotation versus an 11-year rotation, just by reducing the age and moving more towards preventative maintenance versus your higher dollar repairs. So we do use an open-end equity lease, and I'll walk through that in a minute, kind of what that looks like, but that is the method we use for replacing vehicles, and that's what, probably about 99% of the government entities we work with do use. So a couple other things to note, just when we talk about age of the vehicles and age of the current fleet. Today, about 24 vehicles predate anti-lock brake standardization, so that's one of those safety standards that has been added to vehicles. About 82 vehicles predate electronic stability control, and then about 182 vehicles predate the standardization of backup cameras. So when you talk about safety and you look at the age of your fleet, if you're anything like me, I rely pretty heavily on the backup camera now.
Yeah, me.
Yeah, so you can imagine that some of those different safety features can be really beneficial. Also, a lot of new vehicles are starting to have, you know, emergency braking, lane departure warning, safety features are becoming more and more prevalent, as well as increased technology. So really, by partnering with Enterprise, we would expect to have a little bit tighter control of resale, we would be able to take advantage of Enterprise's buying power on the acquisition side, and then our goal would be to move towards replacing all vehicles in about a five-year period. The plan we put together does show about a $4 million savings over the next 10 years, so if y'all were to shift to a program with Enterprise, we would anticipate around a $4 million budget savings. So as you kind of walk through that packet, you'll see that we split the fleet into four different sections. So we looked at the general fleet, which is kind of the catch-all, so it's a majority of your departments that have a handful of vehicles, and then we split out Public Works, Parks and Rec, and DSN. Each one looks a little bit different, but we basically focused on current purchase trends, and we looked at how many vehicles y'all are buying per year, how many you're selling, we looked at some of the operating expenses, and compared them to a program managed through Enterprise, and kind of showed what that would look like. So the other couple things that you'll see as you kind of move through that packet is, you'll see, we mentioned our account team, and that's who Megan is. Megan is one of our client strategy managers, so any time that a government entity partners with Enterprise, you'll have an account team that's assigned to you. So their role is, typically, my role's a little more on the front end, so putting together an initial plan, finding something that makes sense from a budget standpoint, and then you have Megan and her team who continue to provide ongoing support. So they typically come out and meet with the county three to four times a year at minimum. They help with the budget process, they help with the planning process, usually you'll see their face in y'all's budget workshops and things like that as you move forward if you do partner with Enterprise. And then lastly, there's two other sections I wanted to kind of touch on, so the funding piece, which is the open-end equity lease. So it does have no mileage penalties, no wear and tear, it is very different than like a dealership lease or what most people think of when they think of a lease. It resembles a finance. There is an example in page eight of that packet, but to give you some kind of quick numbers, if you think about like a $42,000 vehicle, for example, I think that's the example I use in the packet, traditional finance, that vehicle's paid down to zero over a five-year period. Your monthly principal is about $875 per month to pay that vehicle down to zero. At the end of five years, it's worth around $22,500, so if you were to sell it, you would get that full amount back. With the equity lease, we would basically take that same $42,000 vehicle, instead of paying it down to zero, we would pay it down to a residual of about $10,000. So instead of paying it to zero, it's basically financed down to $10,000. End of five years, still sells for $22,500, you would just get the difference back, so $12,500 back. The advantage there is your monthly depreciation goes from about $875 a month down to about $667 a month. So you're reducing your cash flow, which allows you to cycle vehicles a little bit sooner, allows you to replace more vehicles, which in turn drives down a lot of your operating expenses.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Looking at the DSN, and I know, that's kind of a specialty vehicle though.
Absolutely, yeah.
But you've done this in other counties and cities with a handicap lift, and is that what you would have?
It is, yes, ma'am. So, and I think y'all probably know, Beaufort is unique, that it has it under the county. We work with a lot of the disability boards separately, so we've got several that we partner with, we do all the wheelchair ADA vehicles, so we can provide all of that, yes, ma'am.
And then like if there's, I guess if it's a lease, repairs, if something happens with the lifts and?
So.
How does that work?
The lifts would typically follow like the lift manufacturer's warranty. We can help facilitate having them installed. We can include the cost in the lease, all of those different things. And we can help facilitate the repair if there is one, but it would fall back through the like lift manufacturer. And same with the vehicles, if there were to be like a maintenance issue that's warranty-related, that would fall back to the manufacturer warranty, just as if y'all were to own it.
Does it, will the vehicles have? I know like, I don't want to say, you know, like school buses have devices on them.
Yeah.
That have, that can't go above a certain speed.
Like a speed governor?
Yeah, and I don't think we need that, but I'm just saying, what kind of monitoring is included, if any, besides tracking the mileage?
Yeah, so we've got a couple of different solutions we offer. We partner with a company called Geotab, which is either a plug-and-play device or it can be activated in new vehicles. And they are on Sourcewell as well. But they, basically the way it works is it would track, if y'all were to add this to your vehicles, it would track everything from speed, safety, so harsh braking, sharp cornering, it can track locations. You can use it for routing and dispatching. They even offer camera systems if you wanted forward and rear-facing cameras in any vehicle. So there's a ton of things that it can do. If we were to add that, it would provide you all that insight.
Just something that?
Yeah. A lot of the, especially, you know, you mentioned the disability boards and things like that. A lot of them have chosen to use that because they're looking at routing, they're looking at dispatching, things like that.
Sure.
And then the one other piece I wanted to mention was resale. So resale is a big area that we focus on as well. So the way our process works is any vehicle that needs to be sold for the county, we have the ability to pick that vehicle up, we would delogo it, remove any equipment. We, Enterprise as a company has about 700 remarketers that focus on selling vehicles for all of our clients across the country. So we're going to look and try to find, we use a multi-channel approach. And we look at auctions, we look at independent dealers, we look at franchise dealers. We look at several different areas to make sure that we're getting you top dollar and selling those vehicles as quickly as possible. From my experience working with other counties, the resale process is usually a big headache because vehicles have to be posted, they have to take pictures, you've got to deal with that whole process. So ours is typically a little bit easier process. And then as you start to rotate on a little bit healthier cycle point, you'll start to see your returns come, start to be pretty significant. So resale becomes a much bigger factor when you're selling a five-year-old vehicle versus 11, 12-year-old vehicle.
Another question.
Yeah, of course.
Do you, what's some private businesses that you work this program with too?
As far as like private clients? So here locally, and Megan, The Greenery is one of our large partners. I'm sure y'all are familiar with them here in this area. I'm trying to think, Palmetto Bluff, Gulfstream, like so there's a lot of bigger companies, a lot of construction companies, like Thomas &amp; Hutton, Parkers, Gas Stations, Enmark, or Colonial Oil. So there is a lot. I think across South Carolina, we probably got close to 200 or 300 companies that are headquartered in South Carolina that partner with us. And they range from.
Parkers has a lot of vans.
I was going to say, yep, they do have a lot of vans. So they range everything from like, you know, small sedans up to, you know, larger vehicles. We can do box trucks and things like that, too.
Now, you said Sourcewell is the national?
Purchasing cooperative.
Purchasing. Do they strictly deal with one manufacturer or are they across the board?
So the Sourcewell agreement is essentially for fleet management. So that would allow the partnership with Enterprise. And then typically, what we'll do on an annual basis is we'll evaluate what y'all's needs are. And then we would go out to the different manufacturers to source the best price. So if it's Ford, Chevy, Toyota, whatever that looks like.
Okay.
We're very open to all manufacturers. We have no loyalty as far as manufacturers goes, just our client to get you the lowest cost.
Got you. Okay. I'm familiar with these programs. I was in education and I did it with buses.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, I had 168 vehicle fleet that I had. And when you're spending $100,000 a bus, it gets very, very expensive.
Yes, absolutely. And as, you know, and it's funny you mentioned that because we're starting to see our program, you know, there's even more demand now as vehicle costs are continuing to climb. Maintenance costs are up, you know, 20% year over year. So people are looking for, how do I replace vehicles sooner? And this gives you a great avenue to, to help.
I think this is a very advantageous program for the county and, you know, those people looking on. When you see that we could save a little over $4 million in the next 10 years, that certainly is, you know, good for our citizens.
I have one coming.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the list of year-one replacements. I'm like shocked that we have a vehicle with 245,000 miles, 248,000 miles, 221,000 miles. I've never even had a car last that long. Which means we're probably putting a lot of money into repair and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think as we continue to like dig a little bit deeper, and I think me and, you know, Todd and Neil have talked about this some too, is there's probably an opportunity to reduce the size of the fleet.
I was going to ask that next.
Maybe spares or maybe underutilized.
Correct.
We can help there as well.
Yep.
That was coming next.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions?
Are you located here locally or are you from a national office somewhere?
So I'm based out of Columbia, South Carolina, and Megan's out of our Greenville location. So we cover, so the way Enterprise is kind of regionalized, it's all corporately owned. So we're a privately-held company owned by the Taylor family out of St. Louis, but.
So you're in Columbia and Greenville, okay.
Yep, Columbia and Greenville.
Okay. Is there any other questions from anyone here?
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when you did all the study on this, did you actually visit like our facilities lot? And so did you see a graveyard of vehicles we haven't gotten rid of? I'll just use that term.
I did visit the office. I did not physically inspect, you know, some of those things. But, you know, I know from our conversations, there are vehicles to be sold. And my experience with other counties, there's usually a lot of vehicles that are ready to be sold, that are kind of moving through that process, and it takes time to obviously to do all that. So we can help streamline that and make it a little bit more efficient, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any questions from those of you online? None from Larry? David, any questions? No? Gerald?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was a wonderful presentation. Obviously, this is something that we need to give serious consideration to as part of our budget process. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to administration for looking into this and bringing it forward.
Yeah, this is a good thing.
Appreciate that.
There's a, there's a real opportunity with a program like this. I worked with the municipality, and then we had a similar program. And we, we then included emergency vehicles, police vehicles, fire department vehicles, those kinds of things. They do become, the program vehicle like that becomes much more difficult. You know, the, let's say for instance, one of the sheriff's vehicles could have an additional $16,000 to $20,000 worth of radios and, you know, those kinds of things. So those vehicles are more specific. The real opportunity for us is our everyday fleet vehicles that our enforcement folks use and they're kind of off, off-the-lot type of vehicles. That's where the efficiency for us becomes. And that, there were some questions about things that we could, you know, add to the vehicles. Specific departments that have a specific need can specify that need in that vehicle. And then Enterprise goes through a process of purchasing that vehicle and whether it's a preference of a model or a type or a size or a number of doors, all those kinds of things. So they would do that specification, they give us a price, and then they can often say, you know, what's it look like for all these different manufacturers? And the price is different for each of them. So there's a lot of flexibility for staff to find what they need. All right, I think we're ready for the next PowerPoint for Finance. Our slide that will come up is for the. Audio.
I just know how to start it.
Somebody else's problem, right?
Just jam the whole time. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would you like to?
Yep. There should be a slide coming up that I asked. Okay. When I got on County Council and became chairman, I addressed the vision and mission statement. And out of it came those three words, live, work, and play. And that's what we've been doing, our budget process, on the basis of those. And so I've kind of updated it for this year. The live part is we need to understand where people live now and where they're going to live in the future as we continue to grow because we keep talking about our growth, that we're one of the fastest-growing states. And certainly, we're one of the fastest-growing counties. So people want to live here. Where are they going to live in the future? Work, we need to understand where people work now and what are the job opportunities in the future. Next week, we're going to have a Converge Summit where we're going to talk about economic development and the balance we're going to have in the economic development world. Again, getting back to, we're growing, people want to come here, businesses want to come here. And finally, we have active parks, recreation centers, community centers, passive parks now, and more to come. And we'll need to know what we're going to need in the future. And to that, I added one more concept. And that's what I talked about at our first meeting of the year. And that's the Year of the Seas.
That's a lot of Cs.
Yes, it is. Changes. We just talked about a change right now. And that is, how do we handle the vehicles that we have? We had a way of doing it, now we have a chance to change that and make different choices. So can you go back to the Cs one more time?
Yes.
Okay, so it's changes, challenges, choices, chances, cooperation. Cooperation is among us and our administration as well as the municipalities and our surrounding counties. Conservation, that's our natural resources that we have. They're finite. And then finally, continuation. And all of those are going to impact the quality of life that we enjoy and want to preserve. So that's where we're starting as we begin to build our budget. The rest is now yours.
This is on a time lapse is why it was changing, sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, so good morning, folks. Thank you to Enterprise. Bye, Megan, bye, Chris. Nice to see you. And so we're going to start, start this budget workshop, get it going. All right, these are our discussion topics. I'm not going to read slides, but it's basically our agenda, which you guys have. And we're going to start with Ms. Altal.
Okay, as you can see up there, we have an approved budget that we are working with of 143, 645,000, 143,645,000. And then we wanted to kind of show you where we are at 50% of the year lapsed. So the year-to-date revenue collections are up there. We're at 28% of the budget. And then the expenditures are up there, which are at 45% of the budget. But as you can note, at the bottom, the revenues have been posted only through December 15th. I believe the tax bills went out a month late. And so we're just waiting for those to get posted. And then hopefully by January, things will get caught back up.
Right. That was going to be the point that we would make is that January is the big time where we're going to be getting the vast majority of our taxes in because January 16th is the last day before you become penalized.
Yes. So expenditures look really good because they're less than 50% so far. And then hopefully, the revenue is going to catch up and they'll even out. Do you want to talk about this one?
So our fixed costs are for the general fund. We have fixed expenditures and then we have our, what's called variable expenses in the accounting world. And so our fixed expenditures are things like salaries and fringes, which is the first section there, contracts, utilities, and insurance. Those are our four top fixed costs in our general fund budget. So at the top here with salaries and benefits, we are, we had a budget of 91.7 million. And we are at 49% of that budget for salaries and benefits combined. And so that, to me, is a very safe, conservative budget. We know we are on target with that budget this year. We know we budgeted appropriately as the percentage can reflect. So the next section is our contract section. These are contracts and leases that are paid out of the general fund. And the budget was 12.5 million. We are at 49% there as well. So again, we are hitting that right on, right on the mark. Utilities, $3.4 million, we're at 1.8. It's 53% of the budget. But even though it's a little over 50%, we do pay a lot of our utilities ahead of time. So you know how your cable bill or, you know, whatever is paid a month ahead. So that is understandable to be at 53%. So I feel really good about that budget this year. The insurance is broken out into two sections, vehicle, building, and tort liability, and then medical underneath. So our budget for that section is 17 million. I didn't put a total there because it would be misleading. The first section of our vehicle, building, and tort is only at 32%. But that's because we haven't paid the next round of invoices. They are due next month. So it will catch up. And, and the medical, we're right on target with that 50%. So we know now that we have a good, solid budget for our fixed costs and we know where we're at and we're right on target in all of those sections. And this next slide shows you our general fund budget, what our fixed costs are at 87%. And then our variable cost, which is what's left, is at 13%. So we know from our general fund budget that 13% of that budget are for expenditures such as travel and training, supplies, things that fluctuate by department and fluctuate each year, membership dues, that sort of thing.
Okay, as you know, we're in a reassessment year. And so as we just mentioned, after the January's collections are posted, we should have a pretty good idea of where we are, year-to-date budget with the revenue that we have coming in. And then in the meantime, Finance is going to be preparing a report to be presented at the next Finance Committee meeting. And then also, as you probably already know, the reassessment allowed the millage to be decreased by 5.3 mils. And so here is a little snapshot of the millage compared 22 to 23. You can see most of them went down except for a capital improvement, which went up by 1.6 mils. And then you have the next slide. And this is just a snapshot of them in a grid format.
So that millage that you see on the screen now should be what shows up on your property tax bill each year, the breakdown of the millage by fund.
Can we ask?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The higher education dropped by .1, is that because of the reassess?
That's due to the rollback, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The rollback calculation, absolutely.
Solid waste quite a bit, yeah.
Yep. And so solid waste, we were, we were collecting really strong and we are. and we are still collecting really good revenue off of the millage there. So we're in good shape in that fund, actually.
Okay, and so then the capital improvement funds budget is 24 million. And the year-to-date revenue is at 1.3. Again, that's based on tax collections through 1215. And so far, they've spent 4.9 million in that fund. They had a meeting, a kickoff meeting at the beginning of December and requested that the departments turn in their capital improvement requests by December 29th. And so Eric and his team are working through those requests. And they will be presenting them in a work session on the 23rd to the group that has made requests to see what we need to move forward with. And then a final list, draft list, will be presented to the council retreat on February 6th. But Eric is here. If anyone has any questions for him ahead of that, I think he said there's 600 million in requests?
600 million dollar program.
So the January 23rd is only for ACAs? Or council can sit in on that to hear all of it? We won't bite you.
You're looking at the calendar. This is a staff capital planning workshop.
Another PPOA if you want to join.
So for everybody looking on in some edification, give us some idea of what a capital improvement project might be.
You'd like to know the dollar range, too, for those if you know yet.
Good morning. I didn't want to scream from the back of the room. So to answer, I guess I could two or three questions there. So a capital project is loosely, and I say loosely defined because in our code, we actually have a dollar amount attached to it. But it is a non-routine, one-time expenditure that's adding value or restoring the value of an asset, renovation of a building, construction of a new building, buying a vehicle. Those are large capital expenses. Reason I don't like to put a dollar sign on it is because a remodel could be $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 and be a capital project, but yet definition says, you know, a fixed asset that's over $10,000 or something like that. So the capital project requests that we've received that totaled, as was said, about 600 million. That's a three-year program, roughly 200,000 a year. It kind of averages out. Is there anything from a building renovation, a new construction, a park project expansion, creating a new park? We're receiving the capital requests for all funds, not just the capital fund. So we have the airport enterprise capital projects in there, stormwater, solid waste capital projects. The transportation is part of that. Actually, transportation is roughly half of all of that because the transportation, the different sources that they have make up nearly half of the whole plan. So I think I answered those questions. And so the request that we're seeing this year, just to wrap that up, is a lot of renovation. There's some new construction. There's two or three large capital projects that then make up that other half that's not transportation-related. So again, the numbers tend to look a little skewed. You hear that big number, but it's only, you know, a couple of big projects that make up a good quarter or a third of all those requests. A lot of equipment, sheriff's department equipment for radios, that sort of thing is in there. Software, different softwares that go through IT, but those become capital expenses in the grand scheme of things as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from those of you online? Just to follow up a little bit, the budgeted amount of money is 24 million and change?
Well, right now. That's exactly what I want to talk about. So as an example for this capital budget, last year's capital request, so the department heads, ACAs, all kind of funneled their capital request into the CIP team, into Mr. Larson's team. They put together this big list of all these items, which department they come to. Then the staff meeting, so last year it was about $300 million. We budgeted about $20 million to support those. So we have to take this big list, prioritize those needs, and a lot of that information, the prioritization, comes from our CIP team and facilities teams. There are some priorities for buildings that may be more important because if we don't do something with them, they'll degrade even further and cost us more money. So there's a lot of factors that come into that. So last year was around that $20 million that we budgeted. And then there was some expense carryover from the year before. So we carried over about that $4 million. And that's where the $24 million that you see is. So some of it was FY 2022 money that carried into FY 23. So that is kind of when I said the CIP and the baby steps of that project. Right now, the department heads and ACAs have submitted their requests to the CIP team. So we have this big, crazy number. Some of those, like Eric described, transportation would not come out of the same bucket of budgeted money. So it becomes very complex as we narrow this big number down to reasonable capital projects and prioritize them that way. Some of these projects will be carried, will come from a list that was 2021, 2022, 2023 FY projects that didn't get that priority. So they have a higher priority in the list depending on what the need is. So as I said, it's very complex. It is a big job that the CIP team does and why it's so important that we nail down this, we began working on that early in our budget process.
Did I get that right? Any other questions?
I just would like to make a comment. I've been interested to say there's some that go back further than 2021.
Well, I'm sure there are.
Yeah, there are. So of that $24 million budget, I put on the slide where our expenditures are about $5 million. That does not include encumbrances. So we have $4.3 million encumbered. So there's roughly $9.3 million to be spent. Spent, almost spent. Encumbered and actually spent. So almost halfway, you know, half of our budget, just about 50% of our budget is maybe 45% is dedicated and spent encumbered right now for projects. And so as John was saying, with the $300 million worth of requests and projects last year, so this capital improvement fund is the 1040 fund in our chart of accounts. This fund has millage assessed on it. There are other funds in our chart of accounts that are capital funds that fund more than this 24 million. There are funds, our capital funds, they begin with fours. And this year, we have $219 million worth of projects that are funded out of that 300 million. 219 million are funded in various other funds. These funds do not have millage. They are funded either through geo bonds, fees, they could be the passive parks, rural and critical. So those types of funds. And I want to prepare a separate spreadsheet for you all. I think it's very important that you all see all the buckets of money that we have in our chart of accounts. So I will be doing that for you all and I can send it to you as well.
And the difficult situation we're in, capital improvement, lot of money. We understand that. But the timeframes are short because you're talking about a year budget. You plan to do all of these things in a year. And that is a tall tale to accomplish as well. So that's why we have $4 million worth of rollovers and things of that nature. And for the last two years, we struggled under COVID rules and regulations. And so many of the things that we wanted to accomplish for the past two years, we couldn't do. For example, we knew we were coming and we were ordering ambulances that were 18 months out, fire trucks that were 24 months out. So we have to be cognizant of that as we build this budget. It's a large sum of money. It's what can we possibly get done in the next year?
That's a very good point. So it may be a good idea for Todd Davis, who is here today, to research a little bit on those large purchases for vehicles, those specialty vehicles such as fire trucks and ambulances, heavy equipment vehicles as well, to see what the timeline may be for delivery because that's a very good point. We may not need to include it in this year's budget. We may need to plan for it in this year's budget and build it in the next year's budget. So that might be something that you might want to work on. Get with Eric after the capital requests are presented and we get a good list of those types of vehicles. Maybe you could get started on researching those timelines. Yeah.
Just one of the Cs, the challenges we're going to have and the changes we have to make to accommodate some of the things that we wanted to do.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about capital projects or that fund? Before we move on? Thought about that, yeah. So I've already had a meeting with the ACAs. Was it last week or this week? I don't even know, time flies. And let them know that our capital improvement fund, the 1040 fund that has the millage assessed, it is now going to be a 4,000 fund. It'll be Fund 4,000. It should have always been considered in that group of fours. Every segment in our chart of accounts has a reason. And so all the fours are capital projects or capital improvement funds. Over the years with this 1040 fund, and it's only been in existence for about three years, I believe, whenever it was set up, it was not set up with a box checked that says multi-year fund. So without that box checked, the encumbrances do not roll over automatically. The balances don't carry over automatically. So we have established Fund 4,000 with the box checked now, multi-year fund. Munis will not allow us to go in and check that box once a fund is set up. You can't go in after the fact. So this fiscal year, when we prepare the budget and build that Fund 4,000 up with the millage assessed and get our revenue in order, we will be in line for saving a lot of time with year-end closeout. And the confusion will go away with, I thought I had $2 million left over for this project. You know, why isn't it budgeted, you know, in this year? It'll eliminate all that. The balances in all the projects will roll. On top of that, we've implemented project accounting, which the county has never had, project accounting before. So by having project accounting now, we've set up about 68 project codes. We are working closely with CIP to develop project codes for certain projects, like the road paving and facilities. And we can name them, certain things, and keep up with the balances in those projects that way. The reporting will be way more streamlined, way more effective. So project accounting, that's happening right now. Okay, we're going to move on to debt service fund. You want me to do this one, I know. So, woo, yeah. So our debt service fund, of course, millage. As you all know, we refunded one of our bonds this year. I think it was the 2012, yeah, the 2012 C. No, not the 2012 C, the 2012 A got refunded. Or it might have been 13, I'm sorry. One of them got refunded this fiscal year. So it's going to save us a little bit on debt service in the coming fiscal, next fiscal year. So our balance on our debt right now is not up here, but it's $165,188,000. That's what our balance for bonds and our long-term debt is right now. So our debt is funded through this debt service fund and also through the real property fund also because they took on debt as well, as you all probably know. So our millage has generated 2.2 million so far this fiscal year to cover $9.6 million worth of debt payments that we will be making this year. The issuance 2012 C geo bond is actually due next fiscal year. So we need to keep that in mind when we build this budget this year. It's got an outstanding balance of $8.3 million. We just made a payment yesterday on it, so that number has changed. A portion of this bond is paid from rural and critical. Debt millage may be reduced again next fiscal year after the bond is paid in full. And so I can do an assessment and analyze this fund and analyze our debt. I'll take some time to do that because there may be an opportunity to actually reduce that millage. So if we don't add any more debt. All right, Valerie.
Okay, so just to tell you what the fund balances are, excuse me, in the millage-based funds that we have. So you can see up here, the general fund has 61 million in it. The economic development fund has 552,000. Capital improvement is 18 million. Real property, 4. And then solid waste has 2.5. But you can see higher ed and indigenous care have zero because they should never have a fund balance because we should collect the money and pay it back out. So that sort of highlights where we are in those funds.
What about purchase of real property?
Remember, I said we left that one off?
Oh, it's on there now, okay. I thought I left it off again.
I mean, what's the reason?
What's the reason? It's what?
Not zero. Purchase of real property.
Because we, because that fund, the funds are used, of course, to purchase the property. It may overlap fiscal years.
Okay, okay. All right, okay.
Any other questions about that? Okay, and then we wanted to highlight for you as well the enterprise funds, the funds that actually are made up of fees instead of taxes. So they operate from the fees that we collect. So you can see here the balances that are as of yesterday in those funds. And then the solid waste fund, you know, has millage attached to it, but I think they're looking to see about fees going into that as well.
Question about the airports. Is that solely based on collection of the fees? I mean, where's all that money coming from? I guess is my question. Just for my own knowledge and for the public.
Right, okay. So these numbers you see on the screen are fund balances, not necessarily cash balances in these accounts. So fund balance also includes capital assets and depreciation and stuff like that. And also includes liabilities. So it doesn't mean it's a cash balance. I can get you some cash balances on those funds. They are in the black right now and they're doing better than they have the past few years. But I can get you some cash balances if you want those.
If, like the airport and say stormwater, they receive grants for different things. Is that reflected in here, too?
Okay, stormwater, yes. The airport, no. They have a separate grant fund, this 5402, that we run all the grants through that so it's not commingled with our operating funds. And just to let you know, I had a conversation with our financial analyst, David Cheatwood from Tryon Securities. John Rembold, Brian Cronin, and I met with him via Teams a couple of weeks ago just to discuss what our options could be now or in the future for airport issuance of debt, possibly. And so I know we haven't been in a position in the past to do that because our revenue has not, we haven't had a good history of strong revenue, you know, in the airport funds. But now, you know, he may have a way that could help us that we've been discussing. So just a little bit of debt, just for the cash flow. And what I mean by the cash flow is they're matched. Normally, the Hilton Head Airport has all these FAA grants that have their 90% and we have to match it with 10%. Okay, so the 10% match with these being such high-cost projects, you know, may interfere with our cash flow. And that's what our prior CFO was concerned about throughout the years. And I share that same concern. So if the airport doesn't have the 10% in the bank, you know, showing in their chart of accounts as cash balance, then that money, we have to then that money, we have to front that money, you know, and then it goes back, you know, it just goes back and forth. But it essentially has been pulled from our general fund, pulled cash before. And so that's not good business practice. I'd rather them have, I'd rather issue maybe a ban for, you know, four or five, I don't know. I'm not going to put a number out there, just a small four or five million dollars maybe, to cover that percentage, just so they have continuous cash flow in that fund. So that's something that we're talking about right now, just letting you know. It's just for information right now. We're at the early stages of discussing that.
I'm surprised, Tab, that you didn't say, wait, that's an acronym. What does ban stand for?
Bond anticipation, no?
You knew that.
I got that from the last CFO.
Yeah, you have bands, pans, rans. I mean, there's all kinds of.
We got all kinds of acronyms.
All kinds of ans. Okay. So anybody have any questions about?
But it's good to say that for the public. So I'm surprised I didn't catch that, too.
Okay, so contingency accounts. The, the idea for the contingency account is to avoid repetitive unnecessary budget amendments throughout the year and budget transfers for unexpected items. So if we increase this, we could eliminate some of those from happening. And then also the payroll contingency account, which you know we set up this year for the first time. And it has $4.1 million in it, and we haven't done any transfers from it yet. Okay.
$71,000.
Oh, yes, we did one, one transfer, $71,000. Yes, you're right. We did a little look into the salary budgets year-to-date, and we have about six departments that might be needing a transfer. And we're going to look at those again in April and see where they stand. Contributing to that could be the $3,000 increase that we had. We had some, some people leave since the beginning of the fiscal year, and we did a PLT payout to them. And then we also had some reevaluation of, reclassification of jobs that could be. It's not much. They're barely over 50% of the year. So we'll take a look at that again, like I said, in April.
So can I ask, you feel this payroll contingency fund's working well, and we have good control on the payroll?
Yes, very happy.
It won't, I don't think the transfer will be nearly 4 million at this point, so.
Maybe not even 100,000, we don't know. It's going to be very minimal.
So as you know, we're working on a, we're going to be doing a comp and class study. The RFPs went out and the 11 people have responded with proposals. And I guess there's a committee that is supposed to be submitting their votes on that, on their.
Evaluations.
Evaluations, that's the word. So they should have a recommendation for what company they'd like to use within the next four weeks or so. And so then once we, the commitment from the people that turned in their contracts, their quotes, they had to be able to provide us with feedback by the end of April, which would be before the first reading of the budget. So at that point, we should be able to take that, what their findings are into account to do salary budget.
Just for the public, how long ago was it we did one of these? It's been a while.
I wasn't here.
We normally do them every four years. So every fourth year, we pay for a company to do it. In between, the second year, we do an internal class of comp.
Okay, I think the major one was even longer ago.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
The last study I had was favorite.
This will be a major, correct?
I think the last one was around 18 or 19.
I think it was, yeah. Anyway, good. You do something internally, and yeah, that's great, but this will be a major, major. Okay. Across all departments, including elected official departments?
Yeah, who's going to ask that?
Or not?
Yes, except the ones that are not part of our comp and class study.
We do have departments that are not part of the comp and class. The sheriff is specifically one, so he would not be included.
Magistrate, public defender.
The auditor included, the treasurer.
Treasurer is included.
Right now.
Clerk of court. Okay, thanks.
Wow, where are you on today? Okay, so I don't know if you guys have ever in the history had discretionary funds per district. I know a lot of counties do this. They, they take some money. It's very minimal, you know. I think Williamsburg County does $4,900 per district. Or, you know, I think Orangeburg County used to do 15,000 per district. But it's discretionary funds. Thanks, Sarah. Woo, wait, wake everyone up.
Mr. Glover, it's time to speak. Sorry to interrupt. I'm going to have to stop the music so that I can turn the volume up on.
Oh, my gosh. That little sound thing? Click on it and delete it? Okay, go ahead. Hey, Mr. Dawson.
I thought she said Mr. Glover.
I can hear you, Joe. Apparently they can't.
Now we can hear you.
We can hear you now.
All right. Good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Is there something in the chat? Did he put it in the chat?
What are we waiting on?
Mr. Glover.
Mr. Glover was supposedly on, but our rules say.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
We can hear you, we can't see you.
How's that, Joe?
Nope, still can't see you.
Okay.
There you are.
There you are.
I just want to go back to a slide on the Stormwater fund balance. And in the chat, I asked, could we at some time during the budget process justify the Stormwater fund balance?
Okay. Yes, sir, we'll work on that. All right.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, we sure can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Now we can, okay. All right. So I don't know if you guys want to explore the option of having discretionary funds per district. If you don't, that's fine, but, you know, just throwing it out there. If not, we'll just leave the contingency in your department.
Right.
And then you guys could.
I would not like it for each district.
No.
Okay.
I agree. I'm much, I think this would become an issue.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm trying to think of any good reason to do that.
Because it's so.
I mean, it sounds great, but I'm not sure it would be.
Okay, all right. Very good then. We'll nip that. That's great. Okay, so progress in transparency and accountability are happening, yes. We feel like we've made huge progress in the past fiscal year in the finance department, and I think countywide. I'm feeling it. I feel like the negativity is now, you know, we're starting to tip that scale over to the positive side and getting a lot of good feedback from employees. And I hope you guys are feeling some positivity, you know, some positive energy from your constituents. So our organization's journey under new leadership has been marked by a concerted effort to elevate transparency, compliance with accounting rules and accountability. These initiatives are not just policies, but reflections of our commitment to long-term sustainability, ethical conduct, and the creation of a workplace that thrives on trust and responsibility. I stand by that. I've always stood by all these words in this slide. This is how I personally operate. And I'm throwing this accounting rules in there because we have had changes in the accounting rules nationwide, federal level, state level, local level. We have to comply with GASB. We have to comply with GAAP. We have had a little resistance from certain departments, but once we educate them on exactly what the laws are, we're finding that they are understanding. And that's a positive thing. So just want to let you know that even though we're making some changes in the finance department and in the chart of accounts, they are definitely justifiable legal changes, and we want to be in compliance with all the rules. So Valerie?
Okay, so in March, we plan to meet with each department head and ACA as they're available to go over their budget that they've presented. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look over the budget calendar that I believe John shared with you. We'll be opening, we will be opening the budgeting module at the beginning of February, so they'll have the whole month of February to enter their information. And so then we will review that with them. Apparently, it was done last year for the first time, and it worked really well. Everybody was pretty appreciative of the time that they got to spend together. And then we'll also be able to take one-on-one time with them to educate them on the chart of accounts and how each segment of their portion of the budget plays in the whole, the big picture.
I have a question. What does this mean, we'll meet with every department head who's willing to meet with the budget team?
I know it sounds like that, but there are certain department heads who, they have very small budgets that normally don't change. They might just have salaries and supplies.
Okay.
So it's not necessary. They don't feel it's necessary to meet.
It's not optional for most people.
Right.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah, I should have worded that differently. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. There's Valerie's information if you need to get in touch with her concerning budget-related items, and she's been doing a great job.
You going to send us this PowerPoint?
I already did. You're welcome.
And then, did you have any questions about the budget calendar that you received? I think it's highlighted with some, yeah, okay. I will gladly let you take over.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very good.
So we scheduled a day for noon, so we would have plenty of time. And we knocked it out pretty quick, so I'm happy with that. So I wanted to talk with you quickly about our next meeting. So our next meeting for council is scheduled for February the 6th from 9:00 to 3:00 here in council chambers. And this is our strategic planning process. Right after Christmas, I think, you should have received a Survey Monkey survey with some questions in there. This is part of my strategic planning process to understand the desires and wishes for council in the coming year. So we can, basically, what I'm going to do with your information is put that together and put together the bones of a strategic plan so that when we come to meet and talk about strategic planning, we kind of have a format already. And your independent guidance will be put together and begin that development. But the strategic planning process will be very open kind of conversation so we can figure out our priorities as we move into next fiscal year. I really appreciate the work that the council puts into all these. Staff has been working for months already in preparation for this. So while today's meeting was, I would say not superficial is not a good word. There's a, there was a lot of work done in the background to provide you that information today. A lot of it has happened years prior to us, years, years prior to budget. And budget planning is all important. We have been studying our last year's budget ordinance since about the day you approved it last year. So I think we'll see some changes in our next year's budget ordinance to correct some things that we've had to manage over the last year. So we are open to your questions. I'm looking forward to your input. I sent that survey to a small group of folks, council members, some executive staff and department heads, so about 50 or so people, and I've got about 29 responses. So there's a few still left out there, but I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to offer. Thanks so much. If there's any other questions, staff is done.
Okay, so any questions from anyone? I will tell you that we're looking, again, the Cs. We're looking to make some changes in how we budget. Obviously, some ways we're going to budget differently. In February, we began a strategic plan of which the budget is part of. I hope to have a presentation ready, well, I do have a presentation ready, for council to think about because I've looked far into the future. And this will be the first step at how we look at the future. What do we need to budget this year and multiple years? As we talked about, I sat with John when we're doing salary increases for next year. It's going to be, okay, where do we want to be with salaries? To be competitive, to make sure that we're not trying to play catch-up, that we are paying what we need to pay, paying what we want to pay, so that we have the top people. So that's going to be a strategic plan for us to get there. So come with your ideas. Start thinking about what you perceive the future to be, to be for not only Beaufort County, but our region. Because what we do in Beaufort County affects our region. What our region does affects Beaufort County. Any comments? Seeing none, then this meeting is adjourned.
That's great. Thank you so much.